We'll call the meeting to order. Abby, would you take your role, please?
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Steeler. Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Chair Gerard.
Here. We ask if you're able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four is to approve the agenda. Before I ask for a motion for that, you'll notice in front of you have a revised agenda. Item 6A is being tabled per the applicant's request, so we will not be covering that this evening. It was a public hearing, so we will be sending out a notice at a later date when they reschedule the meeting. So the chair is looking for a... If there's any questions on the revised agenda before I ask for a motion? And the chair is looking for a motion to approve the revised agenda.
Some vote?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-abatable motion. All those in favor, signal by everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. There is one item on the consent agenda, and that's the Planning Commission meeting minutes from August 23, 2023.
I'll make a motion to approve it, Chairman.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by everybody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention. Very good. So we will move to our regular agenda. We have one item, which is a consideration, which is 6B, consideration of a recommendation of the Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision at the northeast corner of Highway 61 and County Road 50, Abby, since I don't see Ken, I assume you're presenting.
I am. Thank you, Chair Gerard, members of the Commission. Tonight before you, you have a request you tabled in, I believe it was August of this last year. Up on the board, you'll see the subject parcel that we're talking about at the corner of Highway 61 and County Road 50 or 202nd Street North. The applicants are proposing to split the lot into two parcels. It's a minor subdivision activity within the city. The Planning Commission is an advisory body to the city councils, so tonight the request before you is a recommendation to the city council. As noted, in August, both of the two parcels meet the minimum standard requirements for new lots in this zoning district, and the future land use plan will guide the future uses of those properties. You will see these come back before you as those landowners choose to develop the properties in the future, and we'll look to see how those future developments conform to the Comprehensive Plan zoning code at that time. At your meeting in August, staff had presented to you, with to you, a letter that was given to the city by Washington County regarding access management along County Road 50. At that time, the county had encouraged the city to not approve the minor subdivision, to move forward, to not approve any subdivisions along County Road 50. Since that time, and I'll just show that management draft, management plan that's been submitted to us. Since that time, staff has met with the county, and a new letter was submitted to the city that still maintains the county's desire to continue to work with the city to develop some sort of access management plan along County Road 50. The letter noted by the county still indicates they are not sure that they would support the access along County Road 50 in the current location where the farm is located, or the field access is located, but they do indicate that if access would be permitted in the future, that there would be future roadway changes that would be required of the developer at that time. Staff's noting in the staff report that we have a couple different options. You can recommend to the council, they deny the application on the basis they don't have access at this point permitted from the county, or make a recommendation of approval based on a series of conditions, one of them being that they do obtain access. And another item, as noted by staff, which is different from your August presentation, that the developer would enter into an agreement with the city staff, that that access would be temporary until such time as the farmstead would end up being developed. You're looking at me, Chair Gerard, as if I didn't include that in the staff report?
Continue. I got my question, so.
Okay, that is just fine. So tonight before you, again, is a minor subdivision recommendation to the city council. Staff does believe we can work through the access issue. We do encourage you to consider recommending to the council approval. The applicant and landowner, Todd Christensen, thank you, is here tonight to discuss this with you. Do you have any questions for myself?
So then I'll start. Let's start with the road access. In the narrative, you discuss having an 80-foot access. Did make it conforming?
That is correct.
But on page 40 of the documents, page 40 of the report, they show a 40-foot access right in this picture. It's a 40, not an 80.
And that is, that was an oversight on my original staff report, and I meant to amend it when it came back before you, and I didn't. We do, would need an additional condition, that the access be widened to the 80-foot requirement.
So we would need a condition seven?
That is correct.
So as long as we're on access, because it's, I think that's just a bone of contention on this entire site. Long term, when the farm is developed, we would be looking to have access for these parcels through the farm to Goodview?
That is correct. Not to Goodview, no, to County Road 50.
And county's been very clear, there'll be a write-in, write-out only at County Road 50?
The county has, no, not been very clear. The county has provided, indicated that there, yes, I guess this is one of the future write-in, write-outs. Now that being said, this hasn't been an adopted plan. It's just been something that staff has provided to us. It's their working management plan at the moment.
Okay.
The applicant is raising his hand, Chairman.
We'll get to you in a couple minutes.
I would be able to clarify a couple issues that just were brought up.
Just because of the way I have to run it, if I have to, otherwise they yell at me. I get that enough at home. Any other questions to staff? Susan?
I did call Washington County Public Works today because this is not, this is not a good idea. They did do accounts, traffic counts on 202nd this summer, which, as we know, that's not the busy time for that particular road and intersection. And they were surprised to find that it almost meets warrants for the signal at that intersection, which means that if they signalize that intersection in the fairly near future, there's going to have to be room for turn lanes, left turn lanes, that will match the ones on the other side that are coming from the transit center, and they'll be needing to take a significant amount of right-of-way. And what they're looking at now, so as not to destroy the existing trail that's there, is to be taking that on the south side. They, they are absolutely opposed to any kind of full access there. There's only 520 feet between Field or Minur Spreader Access and the, and 61 as it is. And their standard is a quarter mile between...
It's an eighth of a mile, 660 feet.
To the 61 right-of-way. Then you can take that up with the engineers there. They, they are measuring from the 80 feet to the 61 right-of-way as 520 feet, and what they are looking at for that volume of traffic is at least a quarter mile for the full accesses.
It's an eighth of a mile in the letter. It says right in the letter, eighth of a mile, 660 feet.
And what the county is looking at for the full accesses is a quarter mile. We know that there have been significant auto accidents at this intersection. There've been two relatively recent pedestrian accidents, even with the overhead and the flashing lights and the signs. The property has, has great potential to develop if, if instead of carving things up, if the, if the access came in off of Goodview. As, as we've seen the previous site plans for the northern portion, yes, there are some townhouses there, but as, as it was laid out, without interfering with access to the townhouses, you could have a very good access for the apartments that are planned off of I don't see that a, a write-in, write-out into the apartment complex is going to be, is going to assist in marketing those apartments, especially if you, you know, have to go down to Goodview to make the U-turn. And the engineer I talked to reminded me of Broadway. And, and they don't want another Broadway with those cross-traffic collisions that happened before they put the medians in. I think, I understand the desire to sell the property. I understand the desire to, to develop the property. I understand staff's desire to support the apartment building on there. I'm just very, very concerned about the, the traffic implications and, and access, solid access, emergency access to the site.
Chair Gerard, if I can just state for the record, thank you, Commissioner Young. I just would like to at least note for myself, this is not about staff's support of any future apartment building. It is support of the landowner's ability to develop the property. I just want to note that for the record. There isn't an apartment building for consideration right now. It's just the lot split.
It's simply a lot split is what we're considering.
Yeah.
And access to that lot.
Yeah, correct.
So if we approve this, does the county have to approve access?
The county, yes. The landowner will need to obtain a permit from the county to be able to access. There's no guarantee that that permit would be issued.
So if we approve it, that doesn't count in the county's eyes?
The approval is contingent on their ability to gain that access. If they never gain that access, the lot split doesn't actually occur.
And that's what item five in your recommendation is?
I'd have to look back. I don't have a copy of my staff report. I forget that I need to bring paper copies.
It says, "The landowner shall be responsible for obtaining access from County Road 50."
Yes, and if you'd like that added security, you can put in there that the minor subdivision would not be granted until that access is permitted.
Well, if you're in there, your next line says, "Proof of access shall be submitted to the city prior to the release of deeds." Deeds is what we have to do for the lot split, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So do we, at least at a minimum on there, when I want to add that we're Washington County in there, so we know who we're getting it from.
Check.
But.
Abby, what is the access for the northern lot? What, what, we've tried not to have landlocked parcels. So for the northern lot, what access?
The northern lot would be accessed off of the 80-foot access point here. So it's 40 feet now. Condition number seven would be to widen that to 80 feet. Your access to the northern lot would be via that area.
And if, if, after the lot split, the two lots have different owners, how is access to that northern lot going to be guaranteed?
That will be a public easement. Because we'll have utilities at the trail, so we've requested it to be a public easement.
So we'll have utilities in that 80 feet and the roadway, the public road?
It will, it'll be a private driveway with public rights.
So the city won't be maintaining it?
That is correct.
Other questions to staff? Hearing none. I believe you wanted to say a few words, Mr. Christensen. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Abby, city staff. My name is Todd Christensen. I'm at 6150 202nd Street, Forest Lake. I just want to reiterate a couple of things again, just to make sure that we're at least on the same page as far as, as far as the information that we're being provided from the county. First of all, I don't, I'm not aware of any new traffic counts, but to the county's own admission, last fall, their traffic count was 1,750 cars a day. In their letter that they just wrote to us, they refer to their 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which calls out this as a major collector. Well, and a major collector is 5,500 cars a day. I went, I drove this road again today, and you can go for four miles, and there's nothing but farms down there. There's no sewer access. It's outside the Mussoline. If you were to by some chance have a 500, new 500 new homes besides this on that road, you're talking about 700, 800 cars a day. I would contest that 16 years from now, this will be maybe a little more than half of that. I don't see any possible way that this would ever reach 5,500 cars a day in 16 years. I mean, it's 2023. I mean, that's just not going to happen, or come close to that. So I have a real issue with the county on that. Now, all that being said, you know, they're asking for an eighth of a mile in their first paragraph of their letter, August 29th this year. Their second sentence, it says they have a minimum distance of 660 feet. That's been the contention all along, an eighth of a mile, not a quarter. So 660 feet comes to the driveway of the farmstead as it exists today. The, the access point for this property, as, as Commissioner Young said, is 6, is 520 feet. So we're talking about 140 feet. You know, when you come off of 61, when you take a left to go into the Shadow Creek Stables, by the time you get to the driveway, if you're going more than 35 miles an hour, you'd have to be standing on the gas. I mean, it's not, and there's just no traffic there. I don't know about accidents. I've been living there since January. I haven't seen or heard anything, but I'm sure if there is, you know, you're aware of that, I'm not. But, you know, it's been really a battle here to, to get this done, and working with the city staff, it was, you know, we kind of came up with this idea, well, you know, at some point down the road, the farm will probably get developed. I don't know when, but at some point. At that time, we would agree to move it to the 660 feet and abandon the temporary access. There is, in this letter that the county wrote, I want to call your attention to the third paragraph, because it says, "If the new access is constructed..." Okay, so they're basically saying if the access is constructed on Abbey, I don't see where they say they have to approve it, "near the field access on the north side," and that is currently being proposed by the developer. So they're telling us, "If the new access is constructed," well, to me, it seems like it's up to us if we want to have that agreement or not. Now, maybe the county has to weigh in on it, but again, it's a compromise on our part because, you know, this property has an access point, has its own PID number, and, you know, we, we're trying to avoid a bigger problem here, which could be a litigation problem if we're denied access to this property. So I just really think that, you know, on our side, we're willing to compromise with this agreement. Obviously, it has to be written out, and, you know, we have to review it, but I think that we can live with that. And they also said in here that Washington County will likely have no choice, okay? Will likely have no choice. They have a choice, but they may elect to put in a raised median. I don't think they will. But, you know, that's, that again, that's up to them. I think that creates more of a problem than an answer, but... So I think that the county is opening the door for us to do something here. Obviously, we're going to be going back to them. We're just asking you to approve the subdivision and let us fight it out with the county and see what happens, but, you know, I think that, that at this point, we're agreeing with what staff and, or staff and us have agreed to this, that we would agree to this agreement as a temporary access, which quite frankly, takes away our ability to, you know, push forward with, with what we think should be the real access to this property, because it can't be landlocked. It's always meant to have an access. It's a multi-use property. I mean, if I put a Holiday Gas Station on that corner, how are they going to get in and out of there? They're not going to drive down to Goodview to get into the gas station, you know? They're going to come in, and I can't tell you how many entrances and exits there are on Highway 61 itself. I mean, it's a zoo. So, I mean, I think we're really getting pigeonholed here, and I think that we're not asking for very much, 100, a little over 100 feet, which is, you know, from here to the, to the walkway there. I mean, it's not that far. I can't imagine we're going to have a massive accident because of 100 feet. So what we're really asking you for today is to recommend approval of the subdivision with an agreed compromise, and that's really all I got. Do you have anything else, Jim?
Jim McKinnon, I live in Minneapolis. I'm one of the developers. Would seem to me that we need to find out exactly what the county's saying. We have a, we have a letter from the county we think is clear in saying that if we're outside, if our access is outside 660 feet, we're clear. One of your Planning Commission members is saying that, that that is, needs to be a I don't know where that comes from. The letter we have from the county says 660 feet.
But you're only 520 to where you're going, you're 520 to where you're going to access from.
Right. We're 520, agreeing that that would be temporary, and they're saying that they have 1,700 cars, so they don't have an issue now. And their, their, their statement is that in 2040, they think they may have enough traffic to require a 660. And we're saying that we intend to develop the whole parcel, and when we develop the, the stable property, we'll, we'll move it then, and we'll be outside 660.
Abby, does county allow, are they the ones who grant the access because it's County Road 50?
That is.
Or it's the city, correct? We don't grant access.
The county will have to grant an access permit to the property.
And that's up to them, regardless of the decisions the city makes?
That is correct.
Kevin?
Yes, no. I have a question for Mr. McKinnon. You and both Mr. Christiansen have mentioned a couple of times that this is a temporary access, and your intention is when you develop the farm to move the access. Can you give us an idea when you think that's going to happen?
I think the market is going to tell us that.
Can you elaborate on what you mean?
Yes. We don't think there's enough buyers for townhome units or apartment units right now. We think maybe in five years, maybe in seven years, there will be the next group of, we've got a, we've got a preliminary plat for some townhomes, for some townhomes. We think when those are sold, then we do a plat for some more. If that's the market then, if townhomes is the market, if apartments is the market, and that's, it's zone for both of those, then it would be apartments that we'd do. If someone came to us right now and said, "We want the whole thing for apartments," then it's now. But we just think it's a big parcel, and we think it's going to take time for the market to say they have buyers.
Thank you. Susan?
The 2019 traffic count at the intersection was 2,250 cars, and that was before some of the developments that's in there. Abby, we've got site plans for that property at parcel 6640, correct?
Site plans for 66...
40?
40. Is that the subject property? There, no, no, no. The city has no approved preliminary plans for, or the, while the city has reviewed preliminary plans for parcels east of Goodview Avenue, none of those plans will be moving forward.
Forever?
Forever. The development plans didn't, neither for 6640 or the one just to the northeast of there, neither of those passed watershed district review, because the developments had kind of come to the city before they had really worked through those stormwater plans. That was right when I was coming on board here. There were too many, a combination of too many wetland impacts and not accounting for stormwater, and so any parcels that you've seen for development east of Goodview, you will see new plans in the future.
When, when the county says they'll be forced to put medians in there, the county can't design a road that they know will be an unsafe road. And so, I mean, that, to maintain not only their personal engineering licenses, but to maintain certification with MINDOT. They can't design roads that are, that are going to be safety hazards. And so when they say they're forced to do that, it's not that someone's holding a gun to them, it's that they are accountable and responsible for designing a safe road. One of the challenges on Goodview is the high school, and, and that's, that's really seasonal, seasonal, and I also grant that it's, it happens at, you know, not continuous throughout the day. But those of us that drive this area know the challenges of the high school traffic. We also know that the developments that have gone in across from the Forest Hills Golf Course, those folks don't want to try and get out on 97 because of where that road comes out. And so as I drive that road every morning, there are a significant number of people that are coming in onto 202nd, so that they can avoid trying to get on, onto 97. When, when we have, when we know that something is going to be a collector road in the future, it's not fair to developers to say, "Yeah, you can have an access there, but oh, by the way, in 10 years, we're going to close it off." That's not, that's not reasonable to you. That's not, that's not reasonable to you.
May I interject something?
Yeah, I do expect it'll be right-in, right-out only.
May I interject something?
Certainly, sir.
We're perfectly comfortable with moving, putting in the permanent access, 140 feet And I think a reasonable prediction is that, is that we will be doing that before the traffic makes it necessary. And we're, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to develop the property to sell townhomes and apartment sites.
So?
We have.
That is an apartment site, okay. I'm sorry, I thought I'd heard, no, but, okay, thank you.
Okay. I just, so, so, so it's clear.
Yep.
We intend to put an access in there anyway, so we just have to put in a left turn and go 100, 140 feet to connect it with the property on the corner that we want to split. And now, understand, that's based on their letter to us saying we've got to be 660 feet So running 140 feet, that's like putting a road in front of two lots.
That'll put it on the driveway that's currently there, correct? Into the?
It puts it on the driveway and eliminates parking and just, well, it destroys the whole farmstead because it's right next to a training arena. They wouldn't be able to use it.
That's why we don't want to do it now.
Okay. So I'm a little confused because the county's telling you 660 feet. He's telling us you don't have any problem moving in 140 feet, but that's later, that's not currently.
That's not current. That's, we put it in at 520 now, which is right at the end of the property that we were splitting off. And so it's an apartment site. Here's the roundabout. So it's an apartment site, it runs right there, and then the farmstead is here. And so when we develop, when we knock down everything on that stable property and turn it into something else, apartments or apartment site or townhome sites, then the road, the access comes in here, goes to the townhomes, and also makes a left turn and goes over to the apartment building.
And as the county stated, they will give you access at 520 feet?
No.
So you still?
Not yet.
That is the challenge, is that the?
That's the challenge, right?
The site needs to obtain those things from the county before the subdivision would be permitted.
And all of this info, because once they split this, and then they're going to sell the lot to someone, I assume, to develop it?
Yes.
I mean, this would make logical sense. All this is recorded with the deed, or there's an agreement that goes with it so that nothing gets lost in the shuffle?
That is correct. Yes.
Questions of the applicant? Susan?
Could you help me understand why it's not a good idea to come in off of Goodview to access that property? Why that wouldn't be easier for you and, and just do a one-time access so you wouldn't have to ship things later? That?
There's a minimum distance coming off 202nd to have an entrance on Goodview, and that, that would be right in the middle of the wetland. So it wouldn't, and as long as there's other ways in, the, the watershed won't approve it.
Okay.
And there's actually several wetlands to cross to get through the farm area?
Mm-hmm.
If that helps?
Commissioners, questions of staff? Conversation?
I'll make a motion if we're ready.
Okay.
I will make a motion to recommend to the city council conditional approval of Shadow Creek Minor Subdivision of Washington County PID 20-032-21-41-0001 with the seven conditions as discussed and the four attachments.
What was the last one, Kevin?
The four attachments that the city has attached.
Okay. I have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second and discussion. My discussion would be, I'd like to see item five, to state that the landowner shall be responsible for obtaining access from Washington County for County Road 50, and I believe seven is the condition that the easement must be 80 feet.
Eighty-foot access, that's correct. If you're asking me to amend the motion, I?
Yes.
Would do so. I would amend the motion, add number five, add that the approval from the county for the access, as well as the number seven, the 80-foot access, the 40-foot access be widened to 80 feet.
And the gentleman who, Mr. Brink, who seconded, would you agree to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries four to one.
I got to sleep tonight.
This will go before the city council. Abby?
The date hasn't been set, but it could be as late as October 11th. I just have to double-check with our clerk on our next council agenda, which is the 25th.
Okay.
It could be the 25th, but.
Abby, we submitted a drawing on our 80-foot easement.
You probably did. I'd probably have neglected to change that out in the.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good luck. We'll move to item seven, our discussion. Do we have councilperson Roberts online?
We do not.
Okay, Abby, you're next.
The only item I have for you is that we have no new applications. You will not have a meeting on September 27th, so enjoy the fall evening off. However, that being said, we are in discussions with developers about 2024 construction already, so don't anticipate having necessarily a easy winter. Hopefully, we do some good planning through the winter so we don't have such crazy hectic planning-filled summers like this year, so.
Unfortunately, Abby, the developers never, never hear that.
I, yeah, we can talk offline about the timing of things, but this summer has, was a late start, I feel like, for a lot of stuff.
And are we expecting sometime this fall to see some of the zoning?
Yep. Yep, we're studying some work on some of the zoning code amendments, some of that condensing, making things just easier to read. Additionally, the council has directed staff to work on our public nuisance ordinance and improve our administrative citation and abatement processes. So even though zoning has been at the top of priority, so has, so has enforcement, so right now, we're working pretty hard to have a whole new enforcement program set to administer January 1st. So that's taking a little bit of a precedence because it's a kind of an all-hands-on-deck thing, but, so yes, you will see some stuff coming forward, but we're working on some other ordinance amendments along with that as well.
Any other questions, Abby?
It's going to be tight for you guys to meet your notice requirements on the ordinances. We have my sympathy.
Our notification requirements aren't, I mean, we'll, we'll hold hearings at the council level, for sure. There isn't any zoning code changes, so they don't have to have hearings at this level and the council level, but yeah, there's, especially with only one meeting in November, one meeting in December, but.
All right. Thank you.
I'm up against the same thing.
Kevin, anything for you?
Nothing for me.
Justin?
Just now I'm noticing the stickers, I'm going to say, "Nothing for me."
Oh, nothing for me.
Nope.
Jeff?
No, sir.
And I have nothing to add, so with that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion adjourn immediately, sir.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-debatable motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your service this evening. Enjoy the rest of the month off.